So let's go ahead and get started. I'll call the meeting in order. Penny, will you call the roll?
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
And trustee Betsinger.
Here.
Perfect. We do have a quorum this evening. And I should note that we are having this meeting today, remote and in person, due to the global pandemic and the governor's executive order for open meeting act at this time. So it kind of segues nicely into the public comment. Port, sorry, portion of the meeting where a member of the public could either email, call, or show up in person today with their public comment. Has any such happened?
None that I'm aware of, sir.
All right, perfect. And is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Wow.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that no attendees have their hands raised. It doesn't appear so.
Perfect. All right. Go ahead and move on. I'll read the consent agenda and then entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the village board meeting of October 26th. Executive session, minutes of October 26th. The building report for October of 2020. Accounts receivable report for October 2020. The refuse and recycling report for September of 2020. Accounts payable through November 5th, 2020, and the cancellation of the November COW.
So move.
Second, any discussion? Go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger. Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
And trustee Lee.
Yes.
And that carries 6-0. Thank you. Under items for separate actions this evening, the first one is an agreement with Williams Architects for design and consulting services for a new Public Works building. Trying to figure out which director wants this one. Director Ben Warren?
Yes. We're just letting Mark Rody and Mark Bushouse end the meeting, so.
Awesome. Good to see you guys.
Thank you, everybody. Wondering how you did that?
In front of the board tonight is an agreement with Williams Architects for design and consulting services for the new Public Works building. Staff was directed at the October 26th, 2020 village board meeting to move forward with an architecture agreement with Williams Architects. We have, the village staff and village attorney have negotiated the attached contract, which includes the base building of 54,900 square feet. And then all three options that were discussed. The additional 19,000 square feet, the covered parking, and the material storage bins. Looking into the costs, so the basic design services of the project are $1,010,000, or, I'm sorry, $1,010,000 additional design services. So this includes designing multiple copies of the alternates beyond schematic design. So they're including the design of those other items in schematic design. Once you go beyond schematic design, design development and construction documents and bidding, essentially, they have to prepare two completely different sets of plans. And so that's what the $131,000 is. The additional consulting services of 116,500 include such items as landscaping and low voltage interior design. And then the consultant that we had on the space needs study from Whitman Requart and Associates. They are also one of the co consultants on this contract. So that's what makes up the 116,500. If there are any questions, both Mark Rody, Mark Bushouse, myself could answer those questions at this time.
Thank you. Just for clarification, I'm reading the contract, and Mark, or Mark, this might be better suited for you. It looks like the base design service fee for this project is $750,000. Did I read that correctly?
Yeah, if you said we are only going to do the 54,900 and you made the decision now that would be the project, then that would be the fee, the base fee, plus those other items.
That was one of the, I mean, obviously, we get a little sticker shock when we see the grand total design fee over $1 million for the project in just not having, you know, bid out architectural services very often. But one of the comments that we made at our meeting a month ago or so was to really keep our options open, and we can see, really just spelling this out for the board, that there is a cost associated with that, you know, with designing plan sets to bid out as alternates. So if we were concerned tonight about some of these design fees, then we could certainly, you know, make those cuts and not even bid that work out. But just wanted to serve that up for the board and see what the board had on the overall contract as well. In reading this contract, the geotech and site civil is not included, right?
That is correct.
Okay. A question, maybe this is more for Director Wolf. At the last meeting, we talked a little bit about covered parking and the need for that now versus the need for that 10 years from now, 20 years from now. Can you refresh that? Is that, I remember there was a little bit of debate on, do you build the covered parking or access indoor storage for now, for the future? I don't, I just don't recall. Do you remember we? The need for that covered parking as an alternate now, is that a true need at this point? Is that something that we're building for the future?
So I would have to go back and look at the space needs analysis. If I remember correctly, there was a need for covered parking as part of the space as part of the space project to allow the alternate of 19,800 square feet. Again, the way I think that we evaluated that was looking at 19,800 square feet and the way that we would eliminate the need for that sort of parking.
Okay, thank you. Push some of that stuff that can live more in an outdoor environment out. Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
This doesn't include the cost of a general contractor, right? That's a completely separate construction time cost associated with this project?
Yeah, that is correct. I believe the village is contemplating hiring a construction manager. So that manager would be the one that would replace a general contractor. And yet, no, our fees don't have their fees in it.
Ballpark, I know this wouldn't be you guys, but I mean, what would a CM run us on a project like this? Or what do we have earmarked for that?
Generally, in projects of this scale, their cost between what we call general conditions, which means they put a trailer on site, they have people there full time watching the construction, plus the managers overseeing it, and all the costs that they have for those items and their profits. All of that runs somewhere in the range of 10% on a project of this size.
We have that in the cost estimate. That is included actually in the cost estimate for the base bid and all the alternates. So that number that you've seen includes all the estimated fees. So that's kind of a turnkey number.
Okay, that's helpful. Denny?
Is EEI going to also be watching every time too? Or why we, how do we do that?
So EEI is going to do the civil engineering on site. That is only outside the building. They are not going to be watching the construction of the building itself. So they'll just be in charge of the outside of the building, the work outside of the building.
Okay. The CM is going to be in charge of everything, inside, outside. He's overseeing all of it, correct?
So the CM will oversee everything, yes.
Justin? Justin, can you, can you remind me to, the the fees for this, the design portion right now, is that coming from this year's budget? Or are we budgeting for the upcoming year? I'm trying to look at the timeline and figure this out.
So when we originally looked at fiscal year '21, we had budgeted this out that we would not build this until fiscal year '23. We'd issue bonds in fiscal year '22 because of the savings we could, we could receive on refunding some of our debt. We wanted to, we brought that to the board, and that's when the board decided to move forward with issuing the debt on the building earlier rather than later. So.
Is this fee, though, this, what we are voting on this evening, is that coming from this current budget? Or is that coming from next year's budget? What am I missing, Justin?
So fiscal year '21 right now has roughly $200,000 in the budget. Because we did not anticipate moving forward as quickly as we are. So what's going to end up happening is that instead of spending $200,000 in fiscal year '21, and just estimates right now, but the we would end up spending roughly 800,000 to a million in fiscal year '21. And then when you look at the budget for fiscal year '22, that includes the remaining amount of expenditures. So we did have fiscal year '21, '22, '23, '24, we had all that money in the budget. However, the timing has changed on it. So that's why you're seeing a little bit of the difference in the numbers.
I have a couple of questions.
Thank you.
If you're finished.
Yes, thank you.
Going off of Teresa's question. If we're pulling money from 2022 into 2021, in the neighborhood of $800,000 to $1 million, we don't have the $2,022 yet. So how are we going to do that and spend it in '21?
That money would be what we have in reserves in the capital improvement fund right now. So at some point in time in the spring.
We have to reimburse.
We, we have to issue debt sometime in the spring. When exactly that is depends upon the timing of getting the construction manager on. If the plans for the architect, the timeline goes as we think it's going to go. We'd look at probably sometime in March, authorizing, and then issuing the debt in April or May.
So just, just to restate that, we, we know that we're issuing debt eventually for the full cost of this project, of which this will be included. At present, we will be paying that with either capital improvement fund reserves or general fund reserves, which we have excess in both of those accounts to pay for this.
That's correct.
And that's, I just wanted the optics there for public. And then my other question, Denny and I were talking this week. And just to clarify, the way that we're doing, clarify for the public, the way that we're doing, we're restructuring and refinancing our existing debt, extending it out longer. Over that longer period of time, we were actually paying less than what we would have had we done in the shorter time in the same, same rate that we were at.
That is correct. Roughly $72,000 to $75,000.
Okay. Because I know that was trustee Lee's, one of his concerns about getting this debt paid off. And in our discussion, I said, no, it's over. So, okay, thank you.
Yes. It'll be another 20 years now that we're, before that might get paid off. What is the bond for? How much?
So we would look at the bond being for 1.7 million. That's for the refunding portion.
Okay.
And then.
What's the total bond that we're going to get for the building and that?
So.
Was it 17 million or?
Based on the recommendations we made at the last meeting, yes, it would be roughly 17 million.
Well, the other question was, Mark, when you and Jeff went around and looked at those buildings, one was new, one was bigger, one was older. Did you guys look and see what the architect charged? This sounds high a little bit, because I did not. I will go back in my records and see what the architect for this and the police station was. And that's a little more complicated, I would think, than yours, where you got concrete walls and.
Sure. You were referring to the site visits where we went out and evaluated the other three Public Works facilities?
Right.
Okay. Those weren't discussions that we had. However, Williams, two of the three sites that we evaluated, Williams was the architect on those projects. The only exemption from that was South Elgin's building was not conducted by Williams Architects. But I'm sure we could probably try and come up with those numbers and reach out to South Elgin and see what they are. Again, there's going to be some discrepancies because of increases from, you know, past years when they were built, and obviously, we'll have to factor that in.
The way this, the 12 and a half million could be adding systematic design, 1,900 square foot garage. This could be up to 13 million real quick, right? And then the almost 2 million from the old, by your 15 million, right? Or am I seeing this wrong?
Say that again?
If you add all these other things that they get for the additional fees.
Yes.
It could be another 500,000, so they could go. Which would also put the total more like 13 million. I mean, they probably got 500 here in additional 150,000 for the garage. You start adding all those up, you probably got 500,000 more in additional stuff. And you add that to the million, that'd be a million and a half, add it to the 12 and a half.
Danny, just real quick, where are you getting the half a million? What page?
Well, I'm just adding up all these added fees for, on page 25, those added fees we were all talking about. That's.
So for.
Wouldn't that be the 5.5% that exceeds 12.5? Then you got another 12,500. I don't know if it's that much, 500 or not, but you're, you're, when you start adding 150,000 and 12.5, and you start adding all these up, it seems like.
About 250, I think. About 250,000.
It is the total of the basic design services, the additional design services, which, like I said, is taking two sets of plans. At any point in time, board could decide to not do two sets of plans. But the additional consulting services, the total's $1,257,500. When we initially started looking at this, actually several years ago, I did a lot of research on architectural fees. And the average architectural fee is roughly 8% of the project itself. So if you do a calculation on the 15,200,000 that we talked about last time, times 8%, it's 1,216,000. So that's in line with what the average architectural fee is on other projects.
And that's what trustee Betsinger and I were discussing before the meeting as well, that it is in that ballpark if you use that, that metric. You know, a little bit on the high side, but again, you have to think about what you're getting for this. I know that Youngerman works in, you know, works in this field where we could hammer them on their fee, but it's going to come with a reduction in their scope of their work. It's not going to just magically get, you know, the fee reduced. It's going to come at a cost to the scope. And if we want to do that, we can certainly do that. But we know what we're getting. They come highly recommended. You know, I, for one, was very happy with the space needs analysis that they did. And, you know, understand that. And also, at the same time, this is going to be incumbent upon finance and Mark Wolf watching all of these items and making the call. You know, the $35,000 lump sum for exterior, you know, material storage bins. If we don't need that service, it's going to be on him to pull the plug on that before we spend those dollars. You know, and that's just one example.
Can I make a comment here, Mark Bushouse from Williams? If it helps you to know, the Capital Development Board has a chart for architectural fees based on the project type and the dollar amounts involved. And we took our basic service fees right from that chart, used those numbers, and only with the added items of things like furniture design, interiors, landscaping, those extra pieces that you see that Justin listed, those are added numbers beyond that. So we filed the CDB, and those are very tough numbers for us, for any architectural firm to work with. So we're, we believe we're giving you good, fair numbers, if that helps.
I just touched something on my screen and it's all gone. And I'm better than this. There we go. Found it. All right. Any other comments? Guyer?
No. I mean, again, I questioned, it seems like it's an awful lot of money, and there's an awful lot of contingencies that we're going to be spending on the back end, but it costs money, so.
Yeah. Doug, if I, if I could address the contingencies, right now, there's about 1.1 to 1.5 million dollars of contingencies included in the total plan. And so when you look at that, as you go through schematic design, right now, the, the design contingency is 10%. Because we don't know what's going to happen during design. So you get to the end of schematic design, that usually drops to 5%. You get to the end of design development, when we're done designing the building, that drops to 0%. So we're going to be getting closer and closer on costs as we go along. So that is something else for the board to think about.
Yeah, but was, is their fee in the estimated, estimated building cost? I know the CM fee was in there, but is the design fee included in that, whatever it was that we've already seen?
Yes.
This is what I go through all the time. I look at projects in schematic design, design development, construction docs, and IFC sets and all sorts of things. And the whole process is created to help, I guess, pinpoint what you want. No, we don't want this. We want to change this a little bit. We want to, and I think people will always give VE options to, value engineering options. So this is the process that I see a lot. I'm, I'm comfortable with this.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
If I could, one other thing. There are a few minor items that are still being tweaked in the contract. So it needs to be approved, subject to attorney review.
Okay. And the staff comfortable with us approving that tonight, or should we wait?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve based on, subject to attorney review.
Second, any further discussion? All right, call the roll.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
And trustee Betsinger.
Yes. And that carries 6-0. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Justin, we'll get going tomorrow if you want. All right. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Mr. President, I do have a question for Director Wolf before we get off of this topic. Not the Williams contract specifically, but the designation or selection of a CM or a GC. Can you talk a little bit about your thoughts behind what direction you're looking at leaning on that? I mean, both of those routes have some, some pretty significant pros and cons depending upon who gets selected and when, and what the expectations are?
So those, can you state the first part of your question?
Just your thoughts between the selection of a CM or going with the GC and what your hopes for that are, what, what that process is going to look like as you move forward?
So, I mean, those are things that obviously staff, myself, Justin, and Jeff have gone over. The, there's obviously pros and cons to both. The, the CM route that we're looking to evaluate gives the village a little bit more flexibility, we feel, as far as selecting specific contractors for portions of the, of the, of the job. So those were things that we kind of took into the role. I know Justin is working on completing the RFP. So that's something too that we're still kind of working through to make sure we get everything in there language wise, the way that the village sees best fit.
What, what are you thinking timeline on that? I mean, I know we've got a little time here, but.
So the RFP is essentially done. It's been, I reviewed it, and then it went to attorney Julian. And then it was sent to Mark and Jeff. And so we look at issuing that probably later this week. It would be a three-week turnaround. We'd ask for proposals to be in around the first of December. We would then anticipate staff looking at those proposals and then asking certain CMs to come and do interviews with us around the 18th of December. We would then evaluate those CM interviews. And then we would bring back to the board on January 11th the contract for the CM.
Thank you.
Sure.
Which is perfect, because then two weeks later, he's going to be, or they're going to be estimating per the, you know, architectural schedule, they're going to be doing the cost estimate on the SD set. So your timeline checks out perfectly. Yes.
Didn't even know there was going to be a test.
Thank you, Justin. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Anything else on that?
No.
All right. Moving on, item B this evening is the 2020 tax levy announcement. Drumroll. Go ahead.
So as required by state statute, the village needs to announce 20 days prior to the passage of the ordinance, our estimated proposed property tax levy. What, what staff is bringing to the board tonight is tax levy of $2,303,941. That is an increase of $76,000 from. That is an increase of $76,000 from the 2019 extension of 2,227. Of that, there is roughly $24,000 that is included that is for new growth only. And then there's approximately $52,000 included for the tax cap, the allowable tax cap.
What do you think we're going to do there?
No.
Figured I would just serve that up.
Take it out.
To my left.
I'll tell you that right now.
Anything else?
I appreciate you doing your job. And I, I'm, because it's the same questions we ask every year. And I, you're doing your job and I appreciate that. But I'm going to tell you to take the 52,000 out. It's only going to be new growth.
Not hearing any objection to that. And just for our fans at home that are watching this, I'm sure there's millions of them, is that what we're trying to do here is put some downward pressure on our levy, obviously, over a long period of time. And I know you're biting your lip right now, Mr. Finance Director, and I certainly appreciate it. But I, I appreciate you putting it in every year. And at the same point, I mean, at some point, we will have to come off that. I say that every year. Because expenses are creeping up, we've, you know, we've approved, you know, a salary schedule, we've approved several things that the cost of running this government is going up every year. And the modest increase that we're allowed under the PTEL, we've eliminated that every year for, I don't know, eight years in a row. So we do need to come off that now or next year. I'll let you guys pick.
2027, so. Let me piggyback on what Matt said because I've run some numbers too. And I, I actually did the old trick of bringing my Kendall County tax, state bill with me. And when I look at the Village of Montgomery, it's 382, 182 of that's pension amount. So I'm paying the Village of Montgomery $200 for the services I receive, which I, I think is a bargain. You know, of course, the biggest one is School District 5900, the Junior College 442, County 538, Park District 409, Library District 222. Those are all more than what I'm paying to the village. And quite frankly, I get no service from any of those whatsoever. You know, having said that, and again, to piggyback on what Matt just said, I, I did some numbers, ran some numbers too. So this year, and this doesn't include any overtime, based on the increases that we gave our employees this year, 183,868 in base salary increases. And again, that does not include any overtime for non-exempt employees. Matt, you're, you're right on because this is not sustainable. I, I, I hate taxes, just like anybody else. I do not want to pay any more taxes. But what I'm fearful of is that we're going to get to a point where we're going to be behind the eight ball and we're going to be in a difficult situation. I, I went through this with the village years ago when I worked for the village, where, you know, your choices are you free salaries, you lay people off, or you, you reduce services to residents. And we did all three of those, quite frankly. And I kind of wish Jeff was here because he would be nodding his head and it was, it was tough. And, you know, I think that the village does a good job, staff does a good job. This board does a good job of watching costs and making sure that we're not, you know, buying just frivolously on things that we don't need. We, we purchase things that is required to keep the village running and to offer services to the residents. I mean, in recent years, we've reduced the bulk pickup as far as brush. And of course, that's supplemented by our, our waste hauler. But we've, you know, we've, we've cut back where we can and still offer our residents top notch services. You know, we've the, I guess this would be a question for Justin. If, if we did, if we did do the 2.3, if we did the max, what would that, that's you said 52,000. What would that be roughly per household increase? I know it's an average, but.
So the increase based upon number of houses would be roughly $6.22.
Okay. And the businesses?
The businesses would be $44.42.
Okay. So, I mean, it's not a lot of money and I get we're trying to hold the line. And I know a lot of people don't want to pay any more taxes. But at some point in time, you know, we're going to have to, to increase. I, I just don't, I just don't see a, a choice. I mean, you know, for every decision, there's consequences. And years ago, you know, it wasn't this board, but a decision was made to annex and develop West of Orchard. And we're going to have to pay for that growth. I mean, we've talked about this before, you know, here at the board level, at budgets. And it's, you know, as I drove in here tonight, just a number of leaves, you know, on the curb in the subdivisions. And, you know, 22 years ago, when I started, we had one leaf back. Well, actually, we could burn leaves. And then when the board decided to ban burning, we purchased one leaf back. And, and now we have three leaf backs running. And it's, it's going to be interesting, you know, next year as the trees get bigger. You know, how many, how many personnel are we going to have to hire to, to accommodate the needs of the residents? I mean, I don't think we want to go back to leaf burning. And I surely don't think we want to go back to telling everybody you're going to have to stuff your leaves in bags and set them on the curb. So I, I, I would just like to caution everybody about, like Matt said, just we're kicking the can down the road. And this increase, the maximum that we're allowed will net us 52,000. And we've spent 180,000 on raises this year. So we're getting to the point where, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to become the state of Illinois. And I know it's a different thing because, like I said, we have a handle on our expenses.
One of the things that I'd say the primary difference between the Village of Montgomery and the state of Illinois is the Village of Montgomery pays their bills.
Correct.
You know, the school district, the village and surrounding villages wouldn't be in such financial ruin had the state fulfilled their obligations. So.
Correct. And there is a component, this is a pension component. And, you know, that's, that's something we have no control over either. But I, you know, I've, you know, just over the years, well, we've done this for seven years now. Is this, this going to be the eighth year?
This will be the eighth.
That we get to increase the PTEL. And so do you know how much money that we've, we've left on the table?
So through levy year 19, seven years, it's $584,000.
Okay. I mean, and I, point well taken. And I, you know, I, I'm the one that started, started this conversation, but I'll kind of flip it around back on that. And I don't know, you know, how the Park District funds their budget, if it's entirely off property taxes. Cause I, I, I do that same comparison. Or the School District, you know, I know that there's other funding sources, but this is one of three huge funding sources for the village, right? Sales tax, property taxes, and then our utility taxes. Is that accurate?
So sales tax, income tax.
Income tax.
And property tax. The utility taxes go into the capital.
That's right.
Fund.
So our sales tax since 2010, actually, I don't have 2010 on here. Justin's update to the board. When I started 2010, 2012, our tax levy was 2 million bucks. And our sales tax revenues for that entire year were $2 million. In that same timeframe, our sales tax revenues, you know, not including the rebates or including the rebates is $4 million. So we've, we've earned an additional $2 million a year in sales tax. That's not the infrastructure program. That is sales tax going directly into our general fund. So, well, I think it's a great point that we can't freeze it forever. I'm totally with you on that. But at that same time, we are starting to rely more heavily on our sales tax. And I think residents appreciate that as opposed to putting it all on the backs of our residents. It's people who buy stuff at Walmart, Menards, Sam's Club and all that. So I understand it's a point well taken. We are certainly leaving, you know, $50,000 this year on the table or 500,000 over the last seven years. But in that same timeframe, our sales tax generation has been through the roof, the best that we've ever had in the history of the village. So while that's continuing, I would, I would support freezing our levy for now. And if things change year by year, we can revisit.
We'll, we'll know next year for sure because we're, we're down on sales tax projections right now, aren't we? Income projections. So it's just, I, I just don't want to get in a situation where, you know, we get so far behind and that we're relying on sales tax. Because like I said, I, I remember several years ago when the economy went soft and our sales tax tanked. And it was tough decisions that, and I know Jeff was a finance director back then. And it was, it was a tough time for the village.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Okay.
I hear that.
I got a quick question. Probably for Justin. I got that MLL magazine, or MI, whatever it is, magazine that we always get.
IML review.
And it came out that because Pritzer's in such a hole for Chicago and the pensions, we get $108 back for each resident? Is that right on sales taxes or the income tax?
State shared revenue?
The state shared revenue, the income tax.
Yeah. 108, it said.
The budget, we budgeted 98 based upon IML.
Well, that's why next year is going to be 98. The gas tax was 25. It's going to be 20. And I presume every year, he's got to have more money. That's going to go down. So we're going to get less money in these funds than we have. Of course, we get six cents, I think they said, on marijuana sales ahead back to us, which is nothing, I guess, times 20,000 people. But, but you're getting, you're going to have less money taken all the time by the state. It's going to go down. And I asked you two, three meetings ago, what was our reserve? You said 40,000. Then the girl gave the report on financials and she said our reserve is 30,000. And then I'm thinking, well, there's 10,000 gone. We did have some things we spent money on. But when it drops that quick, I go, the state is not going to do us any favors down the road. So you better make sure we, I'm not saying like you, I agree with you that another year ain't going to make a difference. But I also agree with Dan that sooner or later, we got to watch out because this, this governor can hack away on everything. We end up with nothing except our, and he might hit start hitting like the sales tax. I mean.
Yeah. So, so one thing that I would comment on with the IML and just Springfield in general, I think almost everybody in this room has been either with Metro West to a drive down or been down there to lobby on behalf of the village before. And the number one objective of our trip every year is, is ensuring that our LGDF fund is not cannibalized by the state. And every year, that's our number one push because frankly, and we might even see it this fall, is when the state gets in a budget crisis, that is the low hanging fruit that they tend to always look at. It's this agree, you know, loose agreement that they had been municipalities a long time ago. So we didn't enact our own income tax. So that's the number, I mean, we're on that every year. Every cog in the state is on that. If he were to, or anybody at the state would, would go after those funds, you would see, you would see municipalities just jump all over that. And that includes, you know, Aurora, Elgin, Chicago, everybody. It impacts everybody's budget. So I'm, I'm, I don't want to say I'm not concerned about that. But I, in another role, you know, Metro West, we have that taken care of. But I mean, we're stringing the conversation on long enough. I think we've all made some great points that we are comfortable freezing it this year. But understand and make the point to the residents that we can't artificially put that downward pressure on our revenues that it costs to run our village every year, forever. Anything else?
Nope.
All right. And that'll be on for action at a future meeting.
So we will have the public hearing at the next board meeting, November 23rd, and then it'll be on for approval at the, I think it's the December 14th meeting.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
All right. Moving on down the line, item C this evening is waiver of bid and purchase of a GMC 3500 from Kaufman Truck Sales. This was tabled from our last meeting. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Rowley. Before the board tonight is a replacement of a current existing Public Works vehicle. This vehicle is currently a 2008, I misprinted on here, I'm sorry. It's a 2008 Chevy 2500 GMC, or 2500 HD, excuse me. Replacing that from Kaufman's Truck Sales with a 3500 dual wheel truck. Kaufman Truck Sales is the only new vehicle dealership located within the village. One of the things that staff did this time around is we have in the past purchased multiple vehicles from Kaufman's through the waiver of bid process. But we did also cross reference through our Sourcewell membership, some competitive pricing and found that Kaufman's was actually below the Sourcewell pricing that we received from another dealership. So again, gave us reassurance that we're getting, you know, competitive pricing, but also gaining the advantages of purchasing local and benefiting from the availability of, of having services and parts and different things like that. So with that, I'll move forward with asking the board for approval. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those at this time.
Thank you. Anything?
Question. So based upon the information we have here, we're, we're paying $42,172 and that's under the budgeted amount of $108,650. The 42172 includes the upfitting. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct. So the next item on the agenda would encompass the upfitting of the same vehicle. They're kind of correlated together.
And I, I know what you're going to do. So I did the same thing. If you add both of those values together, it is under budget.
It's correct.
It's just not in the memo that way.
Okay.
But I checked your math, so.
Good to have trust.
Trust, but verify. All right.
Hold on. I'm verifying.
When you're not the finance guy, you see what happens, Mark?
Okay.
See, we just found 24, $2,485. Good job.
A little extra.
That's my point exactly. We're good at watching the dollars.
All right. If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Moved by Betsinger, seconded by Marisak. Any discussion? We see Teresa on here.
I'm good.
All right. Go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Betsinger. Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
And trustee Marisak.
Yes. I carry six zero. Thanks, Mark. All right. Don't go anywhere though. Second item is a waiver, bid and award of a contract for Public Works vehicle upfitting. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. So again, as I stated, this is the upfitting that would correlate with the previously approved vehicle to pre-purchase from Kaufman's. So the upfitting for this vehicle, Public Works specifically designed this vehicle for a crane apparatus that'll be used for primarily for our lift station pumps that we often have to service. Currently, we are paying contractors whenever we have issues and services needed. So this vehicle was designed with that intent in mind, but also can serve a multitude of other job tasks. Through the process of looking at this, this particular build, the vehicle or the, the village typically uses multiple different vendors for different applications for truck builds. So one of the things that we looked at was this is more of a custom type of build than it is a, some more of our usual standard builds for such as snow equipment and other applications. So with that in mind, the village is recommending, or staff is recommending the, this outfit for this particular vehicle be completed by Sauber Manufacturing. Sauber Manufacturing specializes in a lot of custom builds. They also do a lot of work for multiple different municipalities as well as other utility agencies such as ComEd and NICOR. Through the process, the village has, feels as though we're confident in the pricing and the quality of service that we'll receive from Sauber. So therefore, we're asking for approval tonight to have the upfitting completed for this vehicle by Sauber Manufacturing.
Thank you. Questions?
Timeline on this vehicle would be contingent on delivery of the truck, which to my knowledge Kaufman. Timeline on this vehicle would be contingent on delivery of the truck, which to my knowledge Kaufman's has a truck in route that fits all the current specifications that we're looking for. Possibly as early as next week works is what, after talking to Kaufman's. Once we confirm delivery of the truck and make purchase, then we'll be talking to Sauber. Unfortunately, we don't have a specific timeline as they don't generally hold reservations because of different situations with, with when we could receive the truck. But we have been in constant contact with them. So they are aware that it's been on our agenda to get approved. So after tonight, we'll notify them. And, and again, after confirmation on the delivery date of the vehicle, we'll have a better idea of the upfitting schedule. So hopefully soon.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Go ahead, Penny.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger. Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Carry 6-0. The last item for separate action this evening is the 2021 Landscape Maintenance Service Contract Extension with Cornerstone Partners. And this was also tabled from our last meeting. And you ran too soon.
I got excited, I left. No, I'll, I'll make this quick. Director Wolf has given me information and I see the differences. My concerns were originally in our 2017 contract. It was about, about $178,000, which included mulch. The 2018, 19 from last year was $178,000, which did not include mulch. But in that timeframe, there were some things that were added and some things that were deleted. The adds are what are, are making it look like the non mulch is the mulch. Now, I, I kind of question. They, they say it's related to pay increases. I kind of question their pricing there. But I'm okay with the contract. We're just going to bid it out again next year.
Correct. So just to give a quick recap to the board, this item, this contract was bid last year. So last year was the original contract year. It was a one year contract with two one year extensions possible. So this would be the first one year extension that we're proposing to the board tonight. Keep in mind that the, in the last bidding process, Cornerstone was the only bidder that completed a bid packet of the, and I don't have this in front of me, it was either seven or eight, different companies have picked up packets. The village did then put together a questionnaire form that we then submitted out to the bidders who did not submit. Trying to get information back, but unfortunately, we didn't get that information back as well. So we are definitely looking towards bidding this project out next year. Going back out for RFP, trying to do a little bit more advertising for that so we can get some competitive bid. In the meantime, Cornerstone has proven to be a very reliable and very good contractor for the village with minimal issues throughout the year. So therefore, that's why we were looking to come back to the board this year for approval for that extension.
I'll, I'll make the motion. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Guyer, any discussion? Go ahead, Penny.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger. Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
And trustee Lee.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now you can go. All right. So that was our last item for separate action. We have nothing for discussion. Just one new or unfinished that I did want to mention this evening is our new AV setup that we have for these Zoom meetings. So after the last meeting, I challenged Administrator Zoffel to kind of figure out a more cohesive process here for two reasons. One, so that Teresa and anybody that's online can hear everybody. And the response, I think that I'm hearing and seeing is that the setup is much better than it was before. Is that accurate? I see two thumbs up, which is perfect from Teresa and Engineer Wallers. Because unfortunately, I do see us dancing between these hybrid meetings and fully remote meetings between now and the spring. I, I'm not sure that we're going to be in a position where we can have a board meeting in two weeks. As of Wednesday, Kane County moves into the second step of mitigation, which is further tightening the regulations. So unfortunately, I think this might be the last time that we see this board for at least a couple of weeks and probably longer in person. But again, the, the AV setup is a huge benefit there. Unfortunately, we're going to be doing meetings in, in hybrid or via Zoom. And it's really important for this board and staff to still be able to interact. I think everybody can agree that this is not perfect and it's not desirable. Everybody in this room wants to have full meetings here. Unfortunately, it doesn't appear to be possible in the near future. So I just want to thank Jeff and Jared and our IT department for putting this together because I really am impressed with it. And anybody else that I'm forgetting that helped set that up. So thank you. All right. Anybody have anything else? Non football related, unless it's Notre Dame. How the Packers do?
What did I say? Packers looking good.
All right. All right. I don't want to cut anybody off. Future meetings, committee of the whole is canceled. We have beautification, the contest judging on November 18th. And intergovernmentals canceled. Our next village board meeting, Monday, November 23rd at 7:00 PM.
Actually, Matt, there's a correction. There is not contest judging on November 18th. That's the regular meeting.
I thought that was our new Thanksgiving decoration.
No, no, not yet. December 9th is the.
You know, you probably could do holiday decorations because I saw people putting them up yesterday.
Yeah, I did too.
So.
We don't get this nice weather.
All right, we do not have executive session unless there's anything else. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger. Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
And trustee Lee.
Yep.
And we're adjourned. Thank you.